Good evening and welcome to our Smyrna Town Council meeting. Before we move into our meeting agenda, we have a drawing that we're going to do tonight from our Boat Day, for our Boat Day winners for the kayaks, paddles, life jackets, a cooler, and gift cards courtesy of Academy Sports.
Thank you, Mayor. I'm Tom Rose, Board Director. As you know, we just had our 14th Annual Boat Day back on June 18th, and that's Mayor and several of the council members, town managers out there. We had almost 400 people in attendance that day, and anybody who attended got to put their name in a hat to be able to go for a drawing for some of the items that were donated to us by Academy Sports. Academy's been working with us for the past several years donating either kayaks or gift cards in order to be able to give out these awards. So tonight, the mayor's going to draw out some names, one at a time. We got six awards. The first one we're going to do a drawing for is the Igloo 40E Court Cooler.
Okay.
No chief. And the winner is Francisco Arias. So that'll be, we'll get in touch with Francisco tomorrow and let him know that they're the winner. The next item is a $100 Academy gift card. Why are you making me read the names? The name is Cedrine Charles. And next winner's for another $100 Academy gift card.
Give it to him.
The winner is Shawna Zarowski.
Very good.
Thank you. This one is also for another $100 gift card.
Now you know how I feel.
Blame that on Mike Strange, though. All right. Winner is Jackie Schwartz. Now we get to our big, big items. The first one's a Pelican Challenger 100 Angler kayak with paddle and life jacket. And the winner is Charlotte Avayos. And the next winner will be for another Pelican kayak, the Maximal 100 Angler.
This one's easy.
All right. And that is Cole Jolly. So we'll be contacting all the winners tomorrow, letting them know that we can meet up with them at Academy Sports to give them their prizes. Thank you very much.
Great. Thanks, Tom, and thanks for everybody who came out for Boat Day, as well as the volunteers and for Academy Sports for the donations. We really appreciate it. At this time, we have Tyler Ford here under Citizens Comments to talk a little bit about Tennessee Achieves. How are you?
Good. How are you doing?
Great.
Thank you so much for the opportunity. My name's Tyler Ford. I serve as Senior Director of Mentors with Tennessee Achieves. And really, I wanted to come down here today and just share with the community of Smyrna, with Rutherford County, that Tennessee Achieves is conducting its annual mentor recruitment effort right now. Every year, Tennessee Achieves recruits more than 9,000 volunteer mentors to support students across the state, and we need 490 right now in Rutherford County. Tennessee Achieves, for those who aren't familiar, is the state's nonprofit partnering, excuse me, nonprofit partnering organization to the Tennessee Promise. We serve to support and guide students as they leverage the Tennessee Promise Scholarship, which is essentially the state's last dollar scholarship opportunity. It gives the chance for high school seniors everywhere in Tennessee to go to community or technical college tuition and mandatory fee free. And at Tennessee Achieves, we want to support those students not only financially, but with non-financial supports as well, mentors specifically. Those mentors are from the students' communities. They help to encourage them and guide them through the college-going process and just make sure that they're successful in accessing a college credential. The mentoring role takes one hour per month. It's done locally, so mentors can serve high school of their choice, a community of their choice, and they work with a group of eight to 10 students through the college-going process. So it's a really critical role, specifically for a student who is a first-generation, low-income college student, who at Tennessee Achieves, that's our target student. So it's a really, really vital role that our mentors serve, specifically as we look ahead to 2023. What we've seen during the pandemic is a nine percentage point decline in the state's college-going rate. That represents 7,000 fewer students entering the college-going pipeline since the pandemic. So reversing that trend and getting those 7,000 students back into the college-going pipeline, it's critical to ensuring jobs continue to come into the state, the economy continues to grow, and our communities continue, really, to prosper. So this mentoring role and our work ahead in 2023 is absolutely critical. We're excited to be out here sharing the word and appreciate the opportunity to join the council today to share just a little bit of an update on where we stand. So like I said, 490 mentors are currently needed in Rutherford County, 9,000 across the state. Anyone who's watching or is interested in learning more can visit our website, tnachieves.org, to learn more. But we've got until October 21st to meet that goal, to make sure that every student in 2023 is off to the races and ready to hit the ground running. So thank you again for the opportunity. I really appreciate it.
Great. Any questions for Tyler? Brian, I know that you've been a mentor for Tennessee Achieves, and I think it's something that's really important, and we appreciate you being here with us tonight, and we'll make sure to get this on our Facebook and out to our citizens.
Absolutely. And I've got some information cards I'll leave on the table, so.
Perfect. Thanks, Tyler. Okay. We will move into our meeting agenda, and I will call the meeting to order. And tonight, Chaplain Bob Horn from the Smyrna Police Department will lead us in prayer, and Amber Hobbs, our town clerk, will lead us in pledge. If you'll all stand with me, please.
Father, we're indeed thankful for the gathering that we have here. We're thankful for these members that serve in this community. We pray to your Father that all things that are considered, all things are discussed, that they think about those that labor and live here within the city limits. We pray to your Father that they use wisdom to be able to help to be productive in all that we do as we move forward as a community. Pray that you be with us and guide us in all things. In Jesus' name we pray. Amen.
Amen.
Please face the flag. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Chaplain, and Amber. Ms. Amber, field duty roll call.
I will.
Councilman Cole. Councilman Morell.
Present.
Councilwoman Peoples.
Yes.
Councilman Short. Councilman Sullivan.
Present.
Vice Mayor Atkins.
Here.
And Mayor B.
Here.
Mayor, before we get started, Councilman Short asked me to make sure and tell everybody tonight that he is under the weather. He's not playing hooky. He's just not feeling well and didn't want to spread the wealth with the council tonight. He apologized to us for not being here, but he did want the community to know, as well as the council, to know where he was at tonight, so.
Great. Thank you. Okay, we'll move on to Item 3, which is approval or corrections of the minutes of the June 7th, 2022, regular meeting and June 23rd, 2022, special called and work session meetings of the town council. Jeff, is everything in order?
All in order as to form, Mayor.
Council, any additions or corrections?
I have reviewed them, didn't see anything, so I'll make a motion for approval.
Okay, we have a motion to approve. Do we have a second?
Second.
Motion and a second. Any discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Minutes pass. Brian, any correspondence or communications tonight?
No, ma'am.
Any awards or recognitions?
No, ma'am.
Okay. We will move on to the consent agenda, and these are items that are determined by the town manager to be routine items and not necessarily needing to be discussed individually. But if there is an item that council would like to discuss or have question about, we can pull that item off. I do like to always read these items so that those in the audience and those at home know what we're voting on. So our first item is approval of the terms of and authorization for the mayor to execute an agreement with ESO Solutions Incorporated for an upgrade of the fire department's record management software. Item B, approval of the terms of and authorization for the mayor to execute a contract with Sherwood Shoes relative to the safety footwear for town employees. Item C, approval of the terms of and authorization for the mayor to execute a contract with Anderson Yards relative to the extension of the existing contract for codes mowing on abandoned or neglected properties. Item D, approval of the terms of and authorization for the mayor to execute an agreement with Moscow Designs and Blanchard Illumination to provide holiday decorations for the town of Smyrna. Item E, approval of the terms of and authorization for the mayor to execute an equipment purchase relative to the golf course. Item F, approval of the terms of and authorization for the mayor to execute a five-year renewal agreement for the aircraft loan with the Naval Aviation Museum, National Naval Aviation Museum. Item G, approval of the terms of and authorization for the mayor to execute a renewal agreement with Rockwell Automation for technical support at the water plant. Item H, approval of the terms of and authorization for the mayor to execute a contract extension with Thomas &amp; Hutton for CEI services for Olive Branch. Item I, approval of the terms of and authorization for the mayor to execute a contract extension with Thomas &amp; Hutton for CEI services for the wastewater treatment plant. Item J, approval of the terms of and authorization for the mayor to execute a contract with Clery Construction for gas line bore in Olive Branch area. Item K, approval of the terms of and authorization for the mayor to execute contracts with Clery Construction for the Sam Ridley and Weekly Lane water improvements. Item L, approval of the terms of and authorization for the mayor to execute the FOG Food Service and Waste Haller Enforcement Response Guide. And Item M, approval of the terms of and authorization for the mayor to execute the fats, oils, and grease management policy. Council, anyone you'd like to pull off and discuss individually? Seeing none, do I have a motion for the consent agenda?
I'm going to approve the consent agenda.
The motion. Do we have a second? Second. Any discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Consent agenda passes. Tonight, we have three public hearings under old business, and our first one is consideration of an ordinance relative to the annexation and R3 zoning of property located on Tax Map 54, parcel 61.00, requested by Sean Collins on behalf of Jamie L. Turner, containing 1.1 acres. The property is located at 8269 Rocky Fork Ammival Road. Kevin?
Mr. Mayor and Council, this is a request for annexation, as you stated, 8269 Rocky Fork Ammival Road. It's about 800 feet south of the intersection with Morton Lane. The land use plan would support medium-density, single-family residential in this area. Surrounding zoning is PRD, which are the Blakeney and Stewart's Glen PRDs in town, and RM in Rutherford County. The town would be providing all services here except for water, which would be provided by a consolidated utility district, and they have indicated there is adequate fire flow here for single-family residential development. There is an existing house already on this parcel. The planning commission did review this and did recommend approval, and staff would also recommend approval.
Okay. Questions or comments for Kevin? Tim, anything you want to add on this?
No, I think we kind of vetted everything thoroughly on this last go-around, so.
Okay. Okay, this is a public hearing, so I will ask if there's anyone here to speak for or against this item. Seeing no one, we'll close the public hearing and go to council for a motion.
A motion we approve.
Have a motion. Do we have a second?
Second.
Motion and a second. Any discussion?
All abstained, Mayor.
Okay. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes with one abstention. Item B is our next public hearing, which is consideration of a resolution to a plan of services for property located on Tax Map 54, parcel 61.00. Kevin?
Yeah, this is just a plan of services. It puts in writing the services that the town will be providing upon the just annexed parcel, upon the effective date of annexation, which, as I stated earlier, is everything except water here. The planning commission did review this and did recommend approval, and staff would also recommend approval.
Okay. Questions for Kevin? Tim, anything to add?
No.
Okay. This also is a public hearing, so we'll go to the public to see if anyone is here to speak for or against the plan of services for this piece of property. Seeing no one, we'll close the public hearing and go to council for a motion.
A motion we approve.
A motion. Do we have a second?
Second.
Motion and a second. Any discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes with one abstention. Item C is our housekeeping item, which is consideration of a resolution in memorandum of ordinance 22-20 relative to the annexation, R3 zoning of property located on Tax Map 54, part of parcel 61. Do I have a motion?
A motion we approve.
Do I have a second? Motion and a second. Any discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes. Our last public hearing tonight is consideration of an ordinance relative to the rezoning of property located on Tax Map 28G, Group A, parcel 1.01, to go from R4 to C2. It's requested by John Lee. The property requested to be rezoned contains approximately four tenths of an acre and is located south of Sam Ridley Parkway West. Kevin?
Yeah, this is a request for rezoning. It's a parcel of land. It is completely surrounded by C2 zoning, but it is still zoned R4. It is south of Sam Ridley Parkway and west of Old Nashville Highway. This would be supported by our land use plan for this area for the Sam Ridley corridor-character area. This parcel does have no road frontage, but the adjoining parcel to the north has the same ownership, and we have received the plat to combine those two together, so it would be all developed together as one parcel of land. The planning commission did review this, did recommend approval. Staff would also recommend approval.
Questions for Kevin on this?
Just to clarify, because I know we've talked about this several times, that once it's combined, that the goal is that the access to it is going to have to come, it won't be off of Sam Ridley. It's going to have to come off the backside.
Yeah. Unless TDOT does something that no one expects, there would be no access to Sam Ridley Parkway. So they would have to have access either through the CVS parcel, the church parcel, or the property to the west there.
Okay. Other questions or comments? Seeing none, then I'll go to the public to see if there's anyone here to speak for or against this item. Seeing no one, we'll close the public hearing and go to council for a motion.
Move to approve.
Motion. Do we have a second?
Second.
Motion and a second. Any discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes. We'll now move on to Item 8, our new business under the planning commission report. We have a couple of items. The first is consideration of an ordinance relative to the rezoning of property located on Tax Map 49, parcel 107.00, to go from C4 to PRD. It's requested by Peter Gay Taylor. The property requested to be rezoned contains approximately 4.38 acres and is located at 10259 Old Nashville Highway. Kevin?
Yes, this is a rezoning request. It's located on Old Nashville Highway, about 250 feet south of the intersection of Old Nashville Highway and Stewart Valley Drive. The land use plan would support the Old Nashville corridor-character area, which would be a mix of neighborhood, retail, and personal service, as well as town homes or attached residential in this, along Old Nashville Highway. Surrounding zoning is a mix of C2, C4, R1, and PUD, which is Lennox PUD. The proposed PRD is for 40 townhomes. Access would be from Old Nashville Highway, as well as from Horwick Lane, which is within Lennox. The townhomes would be arranged from 1,850 to 2,200 square feet, be a mix of brick and concrete siding. The fire department did ask the developer to revise and resubmit the auto turn, which we did receive that yesterday. I don't know if they've had a chance to review that yet or not, but we have received that revised auto turn. I did attach the plan and everything that goes along with that to your packet. The planning commission did review this, did recommend approval 5-4, one against. Staff would recommend approval.
Questions for Kevin on this? I know that we originally had changed that, or it got changed to commercial at the owner's request, and then found it difficult to bring commercial in there, and then around it is more like what we're seeing that they're wanting to bring. So, I mean, I think it fits that area.
Well, I would add that when I was looking at this, at planning, the adjacent property, which is where it says PUD, is Lennox, and as you recall, the original plans there called for maybe eight or so live-work-type condo units there. They've not been very successful with that. As a matter of fact, I'm not sure if there are any there.
Didn't we change it? Didn't we remove it all?
Well, one was, but I think there's one group of maybe four townhomes that are still that way.
I think the south side of Lennox, or that's not Lennox Drive, it's whatever the entrance street is, is still was built to potentially be live-work. The side on this side is.
Those are single-family.
Adjacent to this are all residential.
Yeah. You have a mobile home community adjacent to it and a combination of.
Couldn't make it work.
No, it just, I just don't see that there's going to be any C4 development there, and this seems to be the best use of that.
Agreed.
It looks like on the elevation that they're all rear-loaded driveways, so front of the house stays clean and clear, and it looks like driveways are not facing Old Nashville Highway, so front of the buildings, so.
Yeah.
The layout looks good.
Yeah, and add to that, Steve, they've set aside a good bit of auxiliary parking there for visitors and whatnot.
What the pads allow for?
Two. Two per unit, Brian, which is typical for the townhouses, and then they have the guest parking scattered throughout.
Were there some concerns, the commission?
I noticed the vote was 5-1. Was there any issues?
There was one person who did vote against that. I'll let Mr. Beck speak to that.
That was me. But I'll give you my reasoning for it. I agree with everything everybody's said here. I do. When we did the Lacy product down there, we made that guy keep his frontage as commercial. So just from a consistency perspective, that's the reason I chose to oppose it. I will say this, everything about it is a good fit, and the units themselves are larger than what we usually see. So I get why he wants to change it. He's not getting any commercial activity there. I get that. Just trying to stay consistent from a planning perspective, that was my own reason.
I'm going to be honest, I have issue with only two on the parking pad, and I know that may be, I'll just be honest about it, Parker lives in a place that only has two, and even with the extra parking around, they're always full. They're always full, and there's always cars parked in the street, which is what we've tried to get away from, and.
And that actually came prior to us changing those regulations. If you remember, cancel farms.
Yes, correct.
Came in before we made those adjustments for parking.
Correct. It is probably not a week that goes by that there's not an email sent out by the HOA saying, "No parking on the streets, no parking on the streets," and they're full where the extra parking is because there's, most people have more than two people in a unit, so.
And these are larger units, which can actually offer more space for people, just saying.
I don't have an issue, but in regards to what it is, I have an issue with the parking. So, other comments?
Question. Steve mentioned them being rear-loaded, and I see that they are, but is this the alleyway, is it drivable? I know it's not a street or anything like that, but.
I mean, it's a 24-foot wide, I mean, it's going to be private, it's not going to be a public street, but it is 24 feet wide, so yes, I mean, it is, will be drivable. And the parking, the parking is kind of split up in three or four different places within the development, scattered around, but it is, all the internal streets would be private.
But the little tab on the, between the house, home and the alleyways not, couldn't be used for parking, could it?
No, that's just a sidewalk area in front.
The parking right there. The extra, the extra parking right there.
Count 17. Spies. Extra parking.
But they're also used for, for when you get, for the kiosk.
I think there's actually 21, I believe.
You could use the driveway, just count it.
Yeah, I think, I think there's actually 21.
Oh, I see, yeah, there's more over here to the side. I missed four.
Yeah.
I know it's awful. There were trees.
Other comments?
Another question.
Stay at parking.
On the far left side, at the bottom, that street that goes up there, and then it dead ends up there, is that?
That's the hammerhead.
That's meant for, as a fire department turnaround at the back.
Okay.
Yeah. We don't want people parking there. That's, yeah, that's for the fire department use.
Get back to the parking pads. I thought we had said, we talked about this in the past and said that we were more comfortable with four per pad. Is that not correct?
It's always been a two-car parking pad for towns.
For the, for the towns, it's been, it's two, but with some extra, the guest parking, which we try to get at least half a space per unit, which they're 21 for 40. Or they can do the four in the driveway. That's what we have had some that do the deeper driveways and do have enough parking in the driveway and don't have as much of the guest parking. We've had it done both ways.
Okay. I thought the same thing you did.
With the 35-foot setbacks.
Right, with the 35, if somebody does the 35-foot setbacks with the, either front-loaded garages or the rear side-entered garages or whatever.
Creates more parking.
Right, it creates more parking, and that's the alternative that they can do and not have the guest, as much guest parking within the complex.
Other comments or questions?
Okay.
Well, I supported it at planning, so I'll go ahead and make a motion to approve to get this out on the table.
A motion. Do we have a second? Motion dies for lack of a second. So do we have another motion?
I make a motion that we deny the request based on concerns with parking arrangements.
Okay, we have a motion to deny. Do we have a second?
Second.
Oh, H.G., huh?
Have a second? All in favor say aye. Of denial, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
No.
Motion is denied. Motion is denied.
Motion's actually not denied.
No, motion is approved to deny. Thank you.
Okay. We deny, deny.
Okay, item two, consideration of an ordinance relative to the rezoning of property located on tax map 28M Group G, parcels 23.00 and 24.00, to go from C4 to C2. Requested by Maggie Johnson and Jamal Kamal. The properties requested contain approximately 1.05 acres and are located on Enan Springs Road West.
Yeah, these are two tracts of land. They're adjacent to one another on Enan Springs, about 400 feet east of the intersection with Old Nashville Highway. Land use plan is similar to the previous requests, is the Old Nashville corridor character area, which would kinda be more of a neighborhood scale, retail, and personal service type uses. Surrounding zoning is C4 and R2. There is an existing house on parcel 24, parcel 23 is vacant. The planning commission did review this, did recommend denial, and staff would also recommend denial.
Mark or Tim, anything to add to this?
Well, do you want to guess? You want me to guess? Well, again, what we're looking for is something consistent in the way of zoning, and we're going, moving from C2 to C4, back to C2. So, there were issues with the zoning being consistent, and I mean, typically, when you look at the land use plan, we wanna move from C2 to C4 as you get closer to the neighborhoods, and you can see that it's surrounded by R2 there. The other thing, which Mark discussed and brought out, so I'm not sure if I need to step on your thunder or not, which was, which was a very good point, was there wasn't a clear concept of what was gonna be done here. I think the best that we heard was that a landscape company was going to, was actually looking at this, and there might be some off-street, on-property, just parking of equipment, maybe. Mark, help me out here, maybe some materials and...
Hypothetically.
Hypothetically.
They said they might put a building or a shed there of some kind at some point. There was really no way we could feel comfortable about what hypothetically might take place there, and what Tim already alluded to, is it's sort of shoving a C2 in between a C4 and a R2 zone as you step down. So, great people, nice folks, they have good intentions, but my question to them was, well, what if they sat on this for a year and decided to sell it? Then it's a C2 property, anything can come in there, and we had no control over it. So, I think we looked at it from that angle as well. They weren't sure, really, what they were gonna do there, that they were gonna park some equipment off and on, and we don't know what that was gonna look like or anything, so...
I don't, I don't think that, even if it was, you know, a nice paved lot, I don't think that fits that area.
And that's what started the conversation.
So, even if that was the concept, I would have concern with that at this point. And then, of course, what Tim was saying, you know, C2 is obviously the most unrestricted commercial we have, and we're gonna stick that right next to residential with no solid plan. That's definitely a concern.
Right. And the combined lots would allow just about anything C2 to go in there, so...
Yeah, I mean, I can't think of any, I personally can't think of a C2 instance that I think would it there.
The highway.
So, do I have a motion?
I'm gonna make a motion to deny.
I have a motion to deny. Do I have a second?
Second.
Motion and a second, any discussion? All in favor of denial, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion is denied. Okay, we'll move on to item three, which is consideration of an ordinance relative to the rezoning of property located on tax map 28M Group C, parcel 6.00, to go from R2 to R4. It's requested by Jamal Kamal. The property requested to be rezoned contains approximately 33 one-hundredths of an acre and is located at 102 and 104 Weekly Lane. Kevin?
This is Mayor and Council, and I need to apologize. It's actually Weekly Street, not Weekly Lane, but that's my fault. I put it in, I was typing it into Agenda Quick.
That was another part of town there.
That's another part of town, completely the same street, just strange street name, just street versus lane, so I apologize for that. The map and what's on the screen there is correct, it is Weekly Street, which is about 100 feet south of the intersection with Enan Springs Road West. It is also adjacent to Frank Street. The land use plan would support medium-density, single-family residential in this area, and surrounding zoning is a mix of R2 and R4. This request is before, before you, because of, it is a kind of an odd situation. It is a parcel, the parcel already has two houses on the single parcel. The owner does wish to subdivide the property and have each house on its own lot. The current zoning of R2 requires a minimum of 12,000 square feet, as far as a minimum lot size, and the lot's only about 14,500 square feet, so they can't subdivide it as it's currently zoned. The R4 district does allow for a 6,000-square-foot lot size for a single-family house, and so if it is rezoned, that would allow for the lot to be divided. The planning commission did review this, did recommend approval, and staff would also recommend approval.
Okay, questions for Kevin, or Mark or Tim, anything you wanna add?
Part of this was to be able to deed it separately and be able to sell it separately. And Kevin, we asked a lot of questions at planning about this, 'cause I know the questions are probably coming from here, too, that could they put another unit on there, and there's, it won't go. They'd have to take something out to come back and put something in, so...
Yes, it cannot increase in density. I mean, it's two, no matter how it's currently zoned, or if it's zoned to R4, which there's an adjacent R4 tract there, so really no gain from a density standpoint.
It's kinda just to clean it up.
Yeah.
Do you, do you already have the information on how they planned to subdivide it? Is it gonna be right between the houses, or?
That's would be my assumption.
My only concern would be creating a driveway off of Frank Street. I just wanna make sure that if they're gonna divide it, they divide it between the houses so both roads stay on Weekly, both driveways stay on Weekly Street. That'd be my only concern. But I don't have an issue with the R4 at all, it's just, I don't know how they were planning to configure it, and I don't know that they would. It looks like currently they both have driveways on Weekly. If they stayed that way, it's no issue. I just wouldn't want them to somehow reconfigure and create an entrance off Frank Street, 'cause that street's barely a street. We had problems that, that R4 that's adjacent, remember, we had that discussion about them coming off Frank Street when we did that one.
Yes, good thought.
That was the habitat house you're talking about there, right?
Yeah.
The next one down.
Yeah, actually, I think...
There's two on that lot.
Two or three, two or three that back up to this property are habitat homes.
Other questions or comments? Do we have a motion?
I'll make, I'll make a motion to approve and limit access, or no access from Frank Street, if ever developed.
Okay. A motion, do we have a second?
Second.
Motion a second, any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes. Item four is consideration of an ordinance relative to the rezoning of property located on tax map 27I Group B, parcel 1.01, to go from C2 with LSO to R2 with LSO, requested by Caleb Spearing. The property requested contains approximately 51, 59 one-hundredths of an acre and is located at 103 Maple Street.
Yeah, this is a parcel of land, it's about 150 feet east of the intersection with Sam Davis Road there along Maple Street. This does lie within the Depot District character area, so certainly kind of supportive mix of uses here, kind of more urban-type lot sizes and setbacks. Surrounding zoning is a mix of C2 and R2. It also lies within the Lower Street Overlay District, and that would not change with this request. There is an existing house on this property, has been used as a commercial business, which caused the grandfather residential use to cease, and so the new owner does wish to reestablish the residential use, and so that's why they wanna go back to R2, which is, the surrounding residential zoning is R2. The planning commission did review this and did recommend approval, and staff would also recommend approval.
Questions for Kevin, I mean, for Kevin on this, or Mark or Tim, you wanna add anything? Nope. Then, do we have a motion?
I'll make a motion to approve.
A motion, do we have a second?
Second.
Motion a second, any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes. We'll move on to item five, which is consideration of an ordinance relative to the rezoning of a portion of tax map 33, parcel 71.00 and 71.03, to go from R1 with ESO to PUD with ESO, as well as the amendment of the approved PUD for tax map 33, parcel 71.00, 71.01, and 71.03, requested by Nathan Melson. The properties requested to be rezoned and amended contain approximately 12.61 acres and are located on Enan Springs Road West and Big Sun Lane. Kevin?
This is Mayor and Council, these tracts of land are all on Enan Springs West with Big Sun Lane. They also have frontage on Percival Street. Land use plan is the 24 Gateway character area, which has a kind of a mix of various uses, retail and hospitality and multifamily-type uses. Surrounding zoning is R1, C2, and the Sundell PRD. These parcels are also a part of the Enan Springs Gateway Overlay District, and that would not change with this request. The existing approved PUD is for a development known as Cedar Creek. This approval allowed for 87 townhomes and two commercial lots with C4 uses, as well as the additional uses of government administrative use and daycare use. Since this PUD was originally approved, the town and the developer did execute a plan swap with property given to the town by the Rutherford County School Board, and that is the portion of land that is part, that is actually still zoned R1 and needs to be incorporated into the PUD, and that would benefit both parties. This needs to be done regardless of what you would like to do regarding the PUD amendment request, there's kinda two separate layers to this. The PUD amendment request would be to add the use of convenience commercial, where fuel may be sold. As an allowed use for parcel 71, which is a parcel that's on your map, is highlighted in red, which is there at the corner of Enan Springs West and in Big Sun Lane. No other requirements of the PUD would be changed, the residential piece is not changing, nothing else would be changed, it's just adding that additional use for that lot. The planning commission did recommend approval, 5-4, one against, with the following condition: traffic study will be required for a convenience store, gas station use within this development, and the developer will be required to make any improvements recommended by that study. That would be even if the threshold of maybe trip generation or something is not even met, they still would be required to have that traffic study done, so. With that condition, staff would also recommend approval.
Questions for Kevin on this?
Kevin, so, and I guess the booklet, the PUD booklet, it shows this, shows the town of Smyrna piece, I guess, that's carved out on the corner there, is that right?
Yeah, that's on that map there, it's kinda the parcel...
It's part of the red end.
It's white, it's the parcel of town owns. The red is the part that's still owned by the developer, and that's where they're wanting to put the, this use as an allowed use. The booklet, I don't think incorporates that, the land swap, I think it just has the original PUD, as far as in the drawing.
I got you.
So, does, generally, the convenience store would be, what, a C2?
Yes, or C3, but yes, C2 or 3, could have that type of use.
This is, this is the end result?
This would be the end result, yes.
Yeah, okay. That's what I was trying to get to, what was the final? Which, to access this property, you'd just make another cutoff at Enan Springs, or, excuse me, Rocky Fort?
Enan Springs, whatever. I'm sorry.
To access this property?
Yeah, we, as far as the access, we don't, it could come off Rocky, I'm sorry, Enan Springs or Big Sun, and then, of course, the parcel of town has, has frontage on Big Sun and Percival. As far as the exact layout of, or anything, any development on there, with, as far as this commercial piece, there's no, what, typically would be evaluated for that would be at the site plan stage.
Along with the traffic study.
Along with the driver's study, yeah.
So, is this allowed uses, that they're wanting to be permitted here so that they can't, is the goal to put a gas station here?
I think that's the, at least the habitat is an allowed use, that they could sell to someone to put that use, yes.
But with this, if it were approved, that would be the only thing, that would be, it would be added to the allowable, so it doesn't open it up to multiple C2-type uses, as you're, we're making it finite. You know, another thing that we talked about, the overlay would have provided to this as well, and that would include exterior signage and whatnot, so it would have to be upgraded even more so than a typical, typically what would be allowed in a C2 as far as design review goes.
So, but, isn't that C2, like, right there across the street from Wildwood Drive? That would, that would, that location would allow for a gas station?
Yes.
'Cause it's already C2?
Yes, that was part of the Sims Ridge development that came through a few months ago.
That and more.
Yes, yeah, that and more, yes.
This is just, this one use.
Yeah, this one still has, in the book, C4 zoning generally, with the exception of adding this commercial gas.
Right, I get that, but...
So, the only thing they're asking for is not everything allowed in C2, just a gas station?
Just to be able to put a gas station, but right there on that corner, but there's other opportunities for a gas station to go in that general vicinity without us...
That's correct, yes.
Changing up our particular zoning. I guess that's my concern, is that there's, there's other opportunities for a gas station to fit in that corridor without us changing how we would zone something that would be C4 and allowing this. I just feel like it's, could be setting up precedent for something else to occur in that manner.
Well, I think we've allowed this in other PUDs that we've seen. I can think of, what was the one across from the Blakeney, that had towns on the front, along with...
Collins Corner.
Collins Corner, that had, that had a C store, as well as a strip that, and another building that could, you know, operate as a restaurant or general merchandising store. So, this wouldn't actually be setting a precedent, but it would be something we'd have to consider as far as do we wanna allow it or not, as part of a potential use for the strip.
We have to remember, just south.
This is our new interchange.
Right.
So, this is going to turn into a commercial, probably a large commercial district as it grows.
I remember that conversation, maybe, and I also remember him, remember Kevin saying at this moment, that it is an odd use today, however, as the corridor changes and the Rocky Fort corridor grows, that it would not be. However, on that side where the Rocky Fort corridor, it will, will be set where those properties are on Rocky Fort, there's also gonna be a large opportunity for commercial use to occur there.
Sure, sure.
So, I just am concerned with allowing the leniency right here, if we're saying that we only want a C4 here, but we're gonna give this particular development the right to put the gas station in this place, when there's other opportunities around it that would also allow for that already. Other comments or questions?
Kevin, we had the, I guess, the overlay or the, I don't remember what we called it, the gateway overlay, or whatever we called it here. This commercial use, even the gas station, does fit within that overlay, is that right?
Well, the overlay was really more about architectural landscaping and underground...
I just remember we talked about commercial on the front, then, you know, like an R4, R6 possibly, not necessarily R6, but R4, and then back to R1, kind of layering.
That's, yeah, from the land use plan, you're right, yeah. I was thinking about the actual, the gateway overlay district, which is, this does lie within, really doesn't talk about the use so much as it is about what it looks like and landscaping and screening and those kind of things. Up, you know, an upgrade over what we would typically do, and just in general...
But this is in that overlay, so if a gas station came in, it would have to still meet the overlay requirements for aesthetics.
Yes, absolutely. Whatever gets built there will have to meet those requirements.
Kevin, I know a lot of times in planning, we take staff's recommendations highly, it's highly important to us in planning, and so now we're sitting here on council, and can you reiterate the reasons why...
you reiterate the reasons why staff is recommending it and supports it?
Yeah, I think it, big picture again, it fits the long-term plan for that area. It's really what we've looked at, you know, just taking the long-term view of it.
Okay.
Other comments or questions?
It does require a little traffic test.
Yes.
Those two schools back there, and that's the, you know, we're about to engage that back street to give a secondary entrance, but today that is the only entrance into those two schools and that development back there, so traffic is going to be something that we really have to make sure we get right.
How long will it take for that access for the school to take place?
I think Charles is back here a year, once we start, it'll be about a year.
November 23, so about a year. How quick do you think, if this were to be approved, we'd see anything being put there?
I don't, I don't know.
It could be a year or better.
Before it's open, for sure, yeah, I think it could happen that long.
And keep in mind, the town property that we, when we made the swap and fixed those two usable lots, that's a long-term look for us for a possibility of another, you know, safety-type building, fire department or something along those lines. That's what we're looking at, and that's really the reason we chose that back lot. This went away, but the back lot, we didn't want to, if it was a fire department, we didn't want to be backing trucks up on Enon Springs to get in and out and stuff. That lot suited us better, and the developer was very kind to work with us on which lot we wanted, so.
In their booklet, there's a statement that says, "Development of lots 2 and 3 is to be market-driven. No commercial development is anticipated with the development of the townhome portion." So it sounds like they wouldn't even develop it till the townhomes were completed.
Interesting.
That's, they're getting ready to get started on that. I mean, as far as actual going forward.
If they've got six months or a year worth of townhomes before they even start looking at commercial, I think realistically it's more than at least a year, more than a year.
Well, that's right.
Yeah, maybe two.
It takes a little while.
Yeah.
Well, and the other thing we talked about in planning as a group was, there are rooftops out there now, and for any of them to have any convenience to go find fuel or whatever they may need at a convenience store now, they really have to traverse back into town to do that, so that was one of the things.
Where the closest fuel station was from here, and I guess I couldn't, I mean, it's several miles.
So it's convenient for future rooftops and current rooftops, and that's one of the things we looked at.
And there's one on Enon Springs on the other side of, yeah, it'd be Sam Ridley, I guess.
Other questions or comments? Do we have a motion?
I make motion to approve.
Do we have a second?
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
Aye.
Motion passes. Item six, consideration of a request for approval of a final plat utilizing septic systems for James P. and Juanita Steel at 3178 Morton Lane.
Mr. Mayor and Council, the subdivision regulations require that any plat utilizing septic systems be approved by the town council in addition to the planning commission. The proposed plat is for an existing 4.96 acre parcel to be divided into two lots in the R1 district. There is an existing house and detached structures, which would remain on Lot 1 with the new house to be built on Lot 2. This parcel does lie within CUD service area, and they do have adequate fire flow there for residential development. The planning commission approved this plat, 640 against. Staff would recommend approval.
Do we have a motion?
I move to approve.
Any discussion?
So this has already been approved for re-subdivision, is that correct?
Yeah, the planning commission approved it Thursday night at their meeting. We still have to have, they do show the soils area for the lot. T-DAG does have, we'll have to sign it before it can be recorded, in addition to CUD for water purposes.
Other questions or comments? We have a motion and a second. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes. Item seven is consideration of a donation of land to the Town of Smyrna on Hickory Grove Road from SRM Concrete.
Yes, Mayor and Council, as a part of the PUD approval for Cornerstone and Smyrna, the developer, SRM Concrete, was required to donate two acres for a public safety building. They have identified the area to be donated, which is on the west side of Hickory Grove Road, beginning approximately 250 feet from Jefferson Pike. A plat creating this lot is currently being prepared, it's not, has not been given, we don't have it yet, but it is currently underway. So the exact boundary may change a bit. This parcel is also not currently within the town limits, so when the plat is completed, the town will need to annex the property as well as the existing roadway of Hickory Grove Road there, so we can have that contiguous to our town limits. The planning commission is required to review the acquisition of land by the town and find whether or not it is in keeping with the adopted comprehensive plan and make a recommendation to the council, and the planning commission did review this, did recommend approval. Staff would also recommend approval.
Questions for Kevin on this?
Kevin, refresh my memory of county zoning, RM, county zoning, CS. Is that residential?
RM is very close to RR1.
RM is?
RM is, yes. It's very similar to RR1 zoning. CS, I believe, is commercial services or something like that. I honestly don't know exactly what type of uses are allowed in there. I assume it's something similar to RC2, maybe something a little different than that. That's a, there's been a commercial building for a long time at that corner there. I don't know what's exactly in there now, but...
Kevin, originally we were talking about the approval of the PUD there. There was a plan, at some point, they were talking about possibly closing Hickory Grove, routing it through the complex. I think they vacated that, and now the plan's to leave Hickory Grove open to Jefferson Pike.
That is true.
Do you know what T-DOT's plan for that intersection is? Is it going to be a lighted intersection?
It's going to be signalized, yes.
I think they're going to rework that intersection, too.
And Hickory Grove Road is part of the PUD approval, and they are going to do some work to Hickory Grove Road, and then the entry road, which shows up on this drawing, it's Hollings Head Circle, that plat's not been recorded yet. It's going to almost be like a T-intersection there between Hickory Grove and the new road and that sort of thing. So that's why I said this boundary may change a bit, once we get the actual plat worked out, but this is the basic area where they want to go.
So since our initial plan is this would be another safety site, I guess, Chief, is there any concerns from you for this site, this location, getting in and out of it?
No.
Because ultimately, you're going to have to be the one to deal with it, right?
Come with a lighted intersection, that's the site, that's about that location.
Yeah.
And this is the location that we've already begun the architectural work on, so...
Yeah, I just kind of envisioned, I always, I don't know why, I had it in my head that it would be on Jefferson Pike. That's all I was, I was surprised when I just saw it wasn't directly on Jefferson Pike, but that was the only reason I was asking.
Other questions? Do we have a motion?
I move to approve.
Do we have a second?
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes. Now move under item B, under new business, package liquor board report. There were no applications to the town council to consider at this time. Item C is consideration of a revision to the sewer use ordinance, section 18-216, to include language requiring food service establishments to comply with the town's fats, oil, and grease management policy, and this is a first reading. How are you?
Doing well, how are you?
Great.
Good. So this does add language into the sewer use ordinance that requires food service establishments, restaurants, grocery stores, quick stop markets, schools, retirements, nursing homes, basically anybody of any establishment that is required to comply with the grease management policy that you guys just approved on the consent agenda.
Any questions for Mike on his fats, oil, and grease policy?
I'm going to give that a motion to approve.
I second the approval of Mike's fats, oil, and grease policy.
Motion and a second for Mike's fats, oil, and grease policy? Any discussion about it?
Get it removed.
Appreciate it.
All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Congratulations, Mike, your fats, oils, and grease policy passes. Item D, consideration of a resolution appropriating funds for nonprofit organizations for fiscal year 2022 and 2023. Rex?
Hello, Mayor and Council. A resolution stating that agency, purpose, and amount must be approved before any funds can be distributed to nonprofit agencies according to guidelines established by the Comptroller of the Treasury and the State of Tennessee. We recommend approval of this resolution.
Questions for Rex on this?
No questions. I will make a comment. The last library board meeting, this obviously was discussed, and they just wanted to make sure that, to pass on their appreciation of the continued support funding. We have now, since that meeting, at that time, Smyrna had been the only one that had fully funded, but we've now found that all entities, so all, all Rutherford County entities fully funded this year, so it's good.
Okay, do we have a motion?
Motion to approve.
Do we have a second?
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor say aye. Any opposed? Motion passes. Item E is consideration of surplus items to be sold at online auction through Gov. Deals.
In your packet is a list of surplus items that need to be sold at auction. The list includes seized vehicles, computer equipment removed from service, and various items no longer needed. The town seeks permission to conduct an online auction to sell these surplus items. The auction will be advertised in the Murphysboro Post, on our website, and on Channel 3. All the surplus items will be sold through Gov. Deals and Online Auction Company.
Questions for Rex on this? When does this start if it's passed? When will it start, when it's?
I think after voting, early voting.
Okay, that's what I was going to ask. I just wanted to make sure we don't have any issue. Okay, do we have a motion?
I move to approve.
Do we have a second?
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes. Item F is consideration approval of revisions to the Town of Smyrna's PTO donation and nepotism policies included in the employee handbook.
Mayor and Council, you've got two amendments to our employee handbook. One is to the PTO donation policy, where we are tweaking the eligibility a little bit, where we're going to have a maximum that someone would have to use of their own PTO before being eligible for a PTO donation. And then the nepotism policy, where we've previously included immediate relatives, we're now adding outside business relationships to that policy. So those are the two changes to those policies, and asking for you to allow us to amend those.
Great. Questions for Jeff on this? Any comments? Do we have a motion?
Motion to approve.
Do we have a second?
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes. Anything under other tonight, Brian? Item 10, status reports. Rex?
The May 2022 state share tax, we received $709,081. That projects to be a $1,569,347 budget surplus. The May 2022 local share tax, we received $1,613,210. That projects to be a $2,138,605 budget surplus, and it looks like our folks are shopping local.
Great.
Keep your taxes low, shop local.
There you go. Okay, any questions for Rex on this? Thanks, Rex. Item 11, announcements. Amber, anything? Brian D.
Mr. Mayor, I do have a couple things I'd like to share with the council tonight. Before I get to the photo up there that you can enjoy, but I just wanted to point out a couple of things. One of our firefighters, one of our new firefighters, Dallas Dixon, father passed away recently, and I know his family would appreciate our prayers, and I just wanted to share that with the council. Also, I'm real happy tonight to announce, as you guys know, we have an ITS system. We need to get you back there and let you see how this system is working, maybe before one of our council meetings coming up, we can make that happen, but Tom Rose has been very active with the ITS system, working with the state and his department, and putting together our ITS, and I'm very honored to tell you that Tom has actually been asked to come and speak at an ITS seminar that's going to be held at statewide at the end of July. I believe it's in Gatlinburg, Tom, and very excited for that opportunity and also for him to be recognized for the work he's doing, so I wanted to share that. I also received a, an email from Elizabeth Bowen. She reached out to talk about some of our folks and the work they were doing a few weeks ago, and she couldn't remember all the names, but it was an incident, and she was very thankful for our help. She had a used oak, a huge oak tree in her backyard that had been taken out, and it took out some of her irrigation system. She had called a professional irrigation system to come out and work on the system, and they, they didn't maybe meet all the expectations of our citizen, but our water and sewer department, and some of those guys went out and they were able to take care of it, and she was very appreciative of what we instructed her to do and how we helped her, so just wanted to point that out. Always good to hear good things. Now for the picture of the day, we just had a Fourth of July celebration. Mayor, I know you were on vacation and didn't get to attend, and here's some photos from that, and I wanted to point out, in the three cages top left, that's your town manager getting dunked, which he did several times. Also, to the right, I believe that's Steve Sullivan in the dunk tank, and then at the very bottom with his hands up giving up, that's our own Todd Spearman. As you can tell, a lot of the council members were there that night, but none of them were as wet as some of us. It was a great event, we had a lot of fun, and we appreciate everybody that came out. I just wanted to speak to this issue tonight because I just wanted to recognize, these programs don't happen happenstance. There was months and months of planning that went into this show. There was a lot of activity around the first, you know, two or three days leading up to preparing for, to make sure that we could serve the citizens, and our Parks Department, our Fire Department, our Police Department, the Streets Department, even our golf course was involved in making sure that we had clearance on that side of the road for the fireworks to be, you know, exploded in the air, I should say, but making sure the golf course was cleared, using the parking lot and those kind of things, we really appreciate. And then also our Utilities Department did a lot of work to help out with some of these circumstances to get everybody up and running, so thank you to all of our departments here in the town and how willing they are to come to the table and make something like this happen. And, you know, these are all quality-of-life, you know, projects for us, and hopefully people that came out and enjoyed that evening was proud to be part of Smyrna and what Smyrna put on, so. Next, I've got, we still have a burn ban in effect, and we'll be waiting for the chief to release that burn ban based on the amount of water that we get as far as rain, and it sounded like we were getting a little bit a few minutes ago, chief, so we may have to look at that, but we do want to make sure people do realize that the burn ban is still in place. I think, chief, correct me if I'm wrong, this is for commercial burn and shrubs and those kind of things, as far as if you've got a little fire pit in your backyard, that's still, that's on the ban as well right now. Okay, I just wanted to make sure we got that right, and we'll get it out on social media as soon as that's lifted and people can go back to the debris burns and everything, so. All right, and last but not least, love where you live. Folks, we still continue to fight trash. It's amazing as I ride the streets of Smyrna between Murphysboro in here and Laverne in here and all around our community, and I think it's just a generic problem for our whole state. I was having some conversations with somebody the other day, and they were telling me how they had come out of some states in the Midwest and how you just don't see litter, and then as soon as you hit the Tennessee border, it's, we're covered up, and I will be honest with you, as bad as it is in the sound limits of Smyrna and how hard we work at trying to correct that, our interstate systems and stuff, it's almost... embarrassing. So love where you live, folks, Smyrna's a great place to live. Take a little pride in your community, make sure that if you have items of trash that you want to, you know, expel from your car, wait till you get to a service station or wait till you get home, put it in a garbage can. Don't throw it on our roads, don't throw it on our streets. Love where you live. Mayor and Council, that's all I've got tonight.
Jeff, for you?
Nothing for me, ma'am.
Raquel?
The Independence Day celebration, you've already talked about that, I did have that down, to say thank you to all the departments that participated, I think it was a great event, so thank you to everyone for that, and I wanted to say thank you for all the birthday wishes that I've received from last week, and that's it.
Great. HG?
For the first time in many years, I was unable to attend the Fourth of July event, but the feedback I got from everybody said that it was absolutely terrific, said all the departments did a very good job, and that, that they would come back next year is what they said also. Be kind, we've already talked about shopping local. Tim, what have you got tonight?
Well, thank you, HG.
I too would like to add that I missed Independence Day celebration. I was in Panama City Beach with my wife, and we attended our son and his wife's wedding, Brandon and Jessica Morell, so it's been about a week and a half, and they're still in the throes of wedded bliss and all as well. HG, is it okay if I congratulate you?
It was on my list, too.
Or would you prefer me to? So I'm going to go ahead and do it.
Go ahead, so it's, yeah.
Okay. Congratulations, 32 years?
Is that correct?
32 years of small business ownership in Smyrna. You built a great legacy over the years, and enjoy. I did understand that you'll be appearing nightly at Cracker Barrel with.
Interpretive dance.
Interpretive dance.
Company by Tim, though, I mean, you know, it's a do-hat.
Well, I'm not retired yet, so, but congratulations, in all sincerity.
Great. Steve?
Congratulations, HG, 32 years in two days, right? Is that what I read? Yeah, two days. Congratulations, I will continue to send my daughter to the establishment, so I'll just tell her you won't be there anymore, so enjoy, and I hope someday I'll be able to retire too, but I've still got 15 or 20 years to work. You're a little, you're a little old to me.
Say the employees down there, there's just a different bald man down there, so go see the bald man down there.
All right, excellent. Also wanted to add condolences for Frank Caperton's family. He was almost at every event, took a lot of pictures, and a lot of us, I have a picture on my Facebook that's a picture that he took of me and Pam, that's my Facebook profile. I've got, I, when I heard of his passing, I kind of went back through my photo list, and I literally had probably 50 or 100 photos that he had taken of us, me and Pam, or of us at different events. So Frank's one of those guys that was always smiling, always seemed to be jovial and fun to be around, and he's going to be missed, so I don't know, I think he was 59, I think is what I read, so pretty, pretty young passing, but condolences for his family and we'll continue to keep them in our prayers. I think that's all, I think.
I had Frank on my list as well, and for those of us that do a lot of public service, you run into Frank in a lot of places. And Frank always had a smile and a thumbs up and just a warm-hearted guy. He was also a historian for the area, he knew a lot about the history of our area, and pretty intelligent fellow. He worked on computers, I had an opportunity to work with him a few years ago in the same real estate firm, and he was always warm, welcoming, inviting, and laughing, and so I remember Frank as a smile, that's how I remember him, so. All our condolences to the Caperton family, also to the Dallas Dixon family that you mentioned, Brian. The fourth was awesome, thank you, chiefs, all you guys, that, everybody had a part of it. Brian mentioned everybody a while ago down in the Utilities Department. We were there, and for those of you who did get dunked, you should take that as a welcoming thing, because we were all wet too, but it was just from sweat. It was pretty hot out there. Little breeze came through and it was enjoyable.
I was the third person in that tank, and let me just tell you.
I wouldn't have wanted to be the third person in that tank.
That water was not very refreshing by the time I got there. I'm just saying.
Congratulations, Tom, to be invited to go to Gatlinburg and speak on ITS, that says a lot about Smyrna and your leadership in doing that, we appreciate what you're doing there. Jerry, I bet he's watching.
He is.
If he's not, he's asleep and he'll wake up and watch it, but Jerry, we hope you're feeling better, and.
Tomorrow.
Yeah, tomorrow. Hope you're feeling better tomorrow, Jerry, so. And last but not least, HG, I had you on my list too, to thank you for all the years of service over there, at your store, and your employees, and the friendly atmosphere. Anytime I was in there, it was always courtesy and friendly and good service, but you carry that, you carry that characteristic beyond the walls of your store, and you do that in your public service too. I think people that know you know that that's why you grew a business. You're a great operator of a business, and people always want to do business with people like that. I'm looking forward to what you do, whatever it is, in your years of not having to go to the store anymore. What have you got tonight for us, Mayor?
Mayor, could I, real quick, since a couple of you brought up the Frank Caperton, he was a friend to all of us, just wanted to mention, I got this word today, and I thought it was just so appropriate with Frank and his personality, his service will be Monday the 18th, visitation two to four, and then the service at 4:00 PM at the New Vision Church there in Murfreesboro, and it has been asked that nobody wear black unless it's black and gold with a V on it. So I just wanted to point that out. I know Jerry's watching, and I wanted Jerry to know that as well, but.
Yeah.
As you know, Frank was a huge Vanderbilt fan, and they did ask nobody to wear black to the, to the service, because that was not his personality.
Okay, a couple of housekeeping items. Our Smyrna Depot's Farmer's Market is open each Saturday from 8 until noon. It's a partnership between Carpe Artista, Smyrna Parks and Recreation, and Pick Tennessee Products. It is downtown in our depot district. We also will have Food Truck Friday, a family fun and good food. It opens at 6:00 PM at Cedar Stone Park. It will be July the 22nd. Looks like Advanced Wound Care and Vascular had their ribbon cutting, I see, Jerry kind of took care of that for us, and we welcome them to town. Also, Complete Women's Care on Rock Springs Road also had a ribbon cutting, and looks like Mark and Jerry were there, as well as Todd and Brian, so we welcome them to the town of Smyrna as well. Don't forget, September 16th, Top Gun Night Run, you can register at this time, 7:30 at Lee Victory Recreation Park. All proceeds will benefit the upkeep of the memorial, and I do encourage you to go ahead and get registered, because we do have a limited number of spots available. Early voting for town hall will be an early voting polling location. It will be July 15th through the 30th. The hours are Monday through Friday from 10:00 AM to 6:00, Saturdays from 8:00 to 12:00. It is in the back of town hall, and you will need to bring your state or federal government-issued ID when voting, and just remember to park in the rear of the building off of Pinto Drive. Just a couple of items, the Fourth of July celebration is probably one of my favorite activities, and I hate that we missed it this year, but my entire family, all 10 of us, Britt, myself, Parker, Taylor, Mom and Daddy, Tim, Leanne, and their kids all took a cruise to Alaska, and so we actually watched the Fourth of July celebration on Facebook from Juno, and enjoyed seeing what Stewart's Creek TV helped us do in posting that, but it looks like you all had a great time, and I hate we missed it, but I have to say, I enjoyed time away with family, we don't get enough of that, and we actually got to visit family in Seattle as well, so thanks to everybody who made Fourth of July, the Independence Day celebration possible. HG, congratulations, not only for business, but I think so many times people forget, it's the small businesses that are sponsoring ball teams, putting ads in annuals, supporting nonprofits. A lot of times those big boxes aren't necessarily doing that, and you always stepped up. I doubt there was many that you turned down, and so many of our local businesses are great about doing that, and I know you were always willing to do that. So not only for what you did at the business from the product you put out, but for what you did for the community, and I think that means a lot, and I think that's what makes Smyrna such a great place, is individuals like you who are willing to step up and give back to the community, so we appreciate that.
Thank you.
Yep.
Along those lines.
Yep.
Depot Days, sponsored by SIMA, the Smyrna Independent Merchants Association, will be 23rd and 24th of September, and you can now register if you would like to put a booth into the event.
Great. We will get something out on that as well, on our Facebook page and all of our social media, so anything else, Council? If nothing else, we are adjourned.